That's a thumbs up. Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with a short prayer. I'm going to ask Counselor Crick to start us off.
Lord, we thank you for this MD that we live in, the great place that it is, and all the great people that live here. I pray you'd give us wisdom today as we make decisions for the future of the MD. We also think of Counselor Krybiak, as he's not quite, not well. I pray he'll heal for his body and that you'd be with him. And also, Lord, we want to thank you for our new MLA who's in our attendance today here, and just pray your blessing on him over the next four years as well. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for opening prayer. Going to the agenda, I just wonder if there's any additions to the agenda?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Even Council. Administration would recommend a couple of additions. Under Planning and Community Services, 9.3.8 Provincial FCSS Grant Funding Increase. Under CAO, 9.6.3 Northeast Alberta Leaders Caucus Funding. And under Closed Session, 12.4 Land Purchase Offer FOIP 17. And 12.5 Intergovernmental Relations, FOIP 21. So it's 9.3.8, 9.6.3, 12.4, and 12.5.
Yeah, excuse me. What was 12.5 again?
Intergovernmental Relations under FOIP Section 21.
Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Just looking for a motion on regular meeting of council for May 9, 2023. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making this motion as well. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Also looking for a motion that was carried. Thank you. Looking for a motion that, thank you. Looking for a motion that counsel for the May 16th meeting, 2023?
I'll make that. I've seen no mistakes on that. Look, dear.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Move by Counselor, oh, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, that counsel approves adoption of the minutes of May 16, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. I think we're going to go right into delegations because I think Four Wing Cold Lake is here, correct? All right. You guys are up. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see some of you again. For those of you who have not met me, I'm Colonel Dave Turen. I'm the commander at Four Wing Cold Lake. And I have with me Lieutenant Colonel Fred Duboe. I'm the chair of our 20, in addition to my job, I'm the chair of the 2024 Cold Lake Air Show Committee, and Fred is my deputy chair. And that's what we're here to speak with you about this morning. All right. This is a picture of the 2022 airshow. The airshow was a two-day event that attracted over 27,000 people to the Lakeland region. We received excellent reviews from the airshow of all of our spectators last year. The airshow featured some new types of amenities. We included a campground adjacent to the site. We increased our food vendors and some of the facilities that we had available for people. We tried to improve our VIP chalet service to improve the customer experience of our folks that were visiting. And then, most importantly, we had a really great traffic flow plan. It's critical for those major events, so it was easy for people to get in and out of the airshow. So overall, we looked at last year as a really amazing success. And now we're planning our next airshow event. So the aim of today is to seek sponsorship support once again from the ND of Bonneville. These events are not possible without the great support that's provided by all of our sponsors. We're looking to put on an excellent aviation experience once again for our people, and the Air Force has that ability. And in doing so, attract a number of folks to the local area to provide local economic exposure or benefit and exposure to our region for all the stakeholders involved. We use standard airshow industry analysis to estimate what the airshow impact is to the local economy. Based on last year's airshow, we estimate the direct impact to be over $1.1 million into the local region. And that's direct dollars spent from folks visiting the area into our local shops, stores, hotels, et cetera. The indirect impact beyond that, we estimate to be between two or three times that amount. So it's significant. I think it's the largest event that's hosted in the Lakeland area. A lot of that economic impact is driven by the fact that over 70% of the people had to travel from over an hour away to get to the Lakeland region. And that's one of the main reasons we host a two-day event, is to encourage them to spend the entire weekend for, while they're traveling from that distance. And that provides additional economic impact and opportunities for them to explore the region and spend and support our local economies. There's a number of economic, or a number of areas beyond economic impact that these type of events help out in every area that hosts these major events. We consider things such as opportunities to develop partnerships as we bring in stakeholders from a number of areas just to put on the event. So that provides businesses opportunities to partner with other businesses that are hosting these types of things. That also includes things like civic pride and developing your local leadership and participating in the planning of these events in the ways that communities such as Bonneville might want to host or welcome folks into their community. And then, of course, the tourism impact. We hope that people come to the Lakeland and enjoy what they see and want to come back and return to the area for pleasure purposes as well. So in 2024, we're planning a two-day event again. It's the weekend of the 20th and the 21st. It will be the flagship event for the RCAFS 100th anniversary, which is next year. So Four Wing is going to put a lot of effort into trying to showcase the Air Force during this event. It will be a similar format to the last one, so we're going to have the Full Throttle Festival hosted by the City of Cold Lake on Friday night. The airshow itself will take place on the Saturday and Sunday and have a variety of similar displays that we're working on right now. Tickets will launch on December 1st in online sales of this year. We're going to try to have something for everybody once again, so we'll have the Snowbirds, of course, the CF-18 demo. We're working on a number of other aerial performances. We had the car show, which is a really big hit, and then Kid Zone for folks to get out of the sun and let the kids run around and burn off some energy in some of the play structure areas. Of course, given it's the RCAFS anniversary, we're going to try to have static displays and showcase the capabilities of our Air Force today and allow our public to interact with that. And then our neighbors from down the road in Edmonton are going to bring up some Army equipment and put on an Army static display for our folks as well. Working on some new initiatives, always trying to improve upon the last show. So of course, the theme this year will be the 100th, as I had mentioned. If we're fortunate enough to have the weather we did last year, we're going to have some misting stations on hand so we can keep people cool. The, a number of things to improve the VIP experience as well, we're working on within our chalet areas to improve that with some advice from our honorary colonels who work in that business. And then, just a general audience engagement, we're going to improve our sound system and the use of our app, continuing to develop the technology to have people engage and understand and be able to connect with them directly throughout the show. To give you an idea of what it takes to put on the airshow and what our sponsorship requirements actually are, it cost us just about $900,000 to put on the 2022 airshow. Those figures, some of them were locked in at very early dates, so what we're expecting is this airshow is going to cost us a lot more money with the inflation costs of things such as food and expectations of our vendors are going to be different for this upcoming year. We basically can't generate a number of ticket sales to offset that cost, so the sponsorships that we receive are vital in order to have a successful event. We're working on our corporate sponsorship opportunities for next year. So last year, the MD of Bonneville graciously sponsored the airshow with a $40,000 sponsorship. We have a gap in our sponsorship package in between the $40,000 and $125,000 range, so we're developing some new options in there that will increase the opportunities for sponsors to become involved and provide some unique opportunities for the sponsors as well. Of course, our, the way that we've done this in the past is sponsors always have first right of, previous sponsors have the first right of refusal, and so obviously, the MD of Bonneville has that opportunity as well to repeat their sponsorship from last year or explore some of the other sponsorship packages that we're developing. And we hope to have that ready fairly soon in the summer of 2023 to make available. And that's all I have for information to pass to you, gentlemen. I'm happy to take any questions, should you have them.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve.
Hi. I have a store downtown, and sometimes I feel like it's a big information booth. People always coming in and asking me all kinds of questions. So the big burning question lately has been, "I heard the Blue Angels were coming into town. What's happening with those?" And I'm like, "I really don't know." But I'm here to ask that question, I guess.
Right. Right now, we have not secured the Blue Angels. So the big shows, the big US shows, the Blue Angels and the Thunderbirds, they set their schedule very far out. We did not make the cut for that in December at the International Conference of Air Show event that they hold in Las Vegas, but we have not given up and are actively targeting those performers and many others. Fred, do you have any updates on when, if we're making any progress on the performer list? Okay. F-35, we're hoping to have as well. By December, we will have the, is the next conference, the annual conference, and I think that's when we'll be able to lock in what our performers are going to be for next year.
Sounds good. Yeah, because I think there was time before that, they were kind of scheduled, and then we had COVID, and then they got bumped, and then schedules kind of filled up and went on, right?
That's right. There's some European teams that are coming to Canada as well. The Italian airshow team, demonstration team, is planning a North American visit next year, and we're seeing if they are interested in coming to Cold Lake.
Super. Appreciate that.
Counselor Swiger.
It's all exciting. You mentioned all the key points like traffic and food and water and entertainment and stuff, and I, and the car show. And I just want to ask about the car show. It's, they had all these kind of hot supercars in Cold Lake Grand Center on the streets, and I think that's, again, is that what you're going to try to do? Or was that a totally different event where they had those, all these really neat cars come in?
We did have, I can't remember.
I think they raced.
Like 85 different cars or 90 cars. They were all parked in one of the hangars in the shade and had their displays lined up in that area.
And they also, they also park downtown, if I'm, if I'm correct. And I think there was actually a, was there a race with, like, you could actually race on the runway?
Yeah, that was Race to Base. That was a long, long time ago. And these guys won't be coming back. There's, I mean, there are roads. These guys are running their million-dollar cars up here. It's a road thing, and it's, it's also like, the new standards up on the base are a little different for security reasons. I mean, it's all, it's two big reasons.
That's, that's, that's good. But, you know, the cars are great, and having them in the hangar, and I remember that too from previous ones. It's all good. And we have our big, you know, Kennesaw Resort area out there, and that kind of brings those people maybe out to that area too, well, economic-wise, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, my experience was amazing. We got, when we went to the show, and I just, like, like you said, the parking and the food and everything was just like first class, so you guys, that was a big thing before. I remember the cars used to be parked all the way down to the Tropicana Inn there and to try to get in, and it moved very, what I could see, it moved very smoothly. So that was a big, big hit.
Right. Reputation is huge in Air Force industry or the airshow industry. And so when people have a good experience like they did last year, we expect we're going to have good turnout next year. And the same applies to the performers. We did an excellent job of hosting the performers, so they go back to their home bases and talk about what a great experience they had, which helps us draw them again for future airshows. So we're looking to beat last year for 2024.
Yeah, Counselor Slipshack.
Speaking of attendance numbers, how did they turn out from last year from previous years? The attendance, they increased quite enormously?
Yes. We had 27,000, over 27,000 last year, and I think the previous high was in the around 18,000 to 20,000 range. So it was a pretty significant increase in turnout last year.
That's proof that they did a good, wonderful job because it got lots of compliments from residents and that they just thought it was amazing.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you for coming in today. I appreciate it. It was a great presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll forward our sponsorship package once it's complete, and we look forward to working for you, with you again next year, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to seven development applications and 7.1.
Mr. Reeve, if we could just get a motion for that.
I apologize. That's me again.
I'll make the motion. Accept that as information.
Right. Thank you. Move by Deputy Reeve Fedeau that the council accepts the presentation by Four Wing Cold Lake on the 2024 Cold Lake Air Show as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring their requests for support, both through financial sponsorship and other support to promote the 2024 Cold Lake Air Show to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Development Permit Application 2023-D-065 for Seven Lakes Oil Field Services. The applicant is applying for a general industrial use for an automotive mechanic shop. The property is located in the hamlet of Ardmore, 1,200 feet east of 50th Street and 47th Avenue intersection, north of Highway 28. Adjacent properties are the Iron Horse Trail, industrial use lots, and a quarter section remnant. The applicant is applying to construct a mechanic shop to repair only Seven Lakes-owned vehicles on a lot with an existing 11,000-square-foot shop. The intent of the new shop is to provide additional space as the company has grown, and they have more vehicles to work on. This lot is within the Ardmore Area Structure Plan mixed-use area, and the proposal complies with the guidelines for this area. A referral was sent to the MD Infrastructure Services and Public Safety Departments with no concerns received. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 16, 2023, and we have not received any concerns. Our recommendation for application 2023-D-065 is approve the request for general industrial use for an automotive mechanic shop as discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 76.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. An approved building permit is required as per the Safety Code, Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable gas, plumbing, electrical, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on-site in a waste bin or enclosed/covered trailer. Alberta, approval from Alberta Transportation is required, shall be connected to municipal water and sewer if applicable, shall comply with the Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw Number 1812 regarding noise and nuisance. As per Section 52 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. Development to be located as per the minimum setbacks in Hamlet General District. Front yard, 7.6 meters; side yard, 1.5 meters; rear yard, 7.6 meters. As per Section 7.76.6 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, outdoor storage and display shall be no outdoor storage of goods, products, materials, or equipment permitted within the front yard setback of this district. Outside storage of goods, products, materials, or equipment shall be screened from public thoroughfares to the satisfaction of the development authority.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, I'm not against this. I'll make the motion to approve it, but I do have a comment. Per seven, talking about Sections 52 of the Bylaw on outdoor lighting, the shop that they've got next to that one, we've had complaints from rural resident or neighbors, and they're not adjacent. They're the 48th Avenue, so the block's straight north. But there's nothing between 7th and 20, or 47,000 and 48. So anyway, the lighting they put up, and I'd like you to check into the lighting because you should have down, downpointing lighting, not lighting that lights up the whole neighborhood. And so, you know, there was concerns about it, and so I like, you know, the comment about lighting. But there's got to be an issue with lighting that you actually have to have your lighting directed down, not directly, you know, into the neighborhood. So people are complaining, and so I'm hoping this won't be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make the motion. Mr. H, your approval?
All right. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2023-D-065 for general industrial use for automotive mechanic shop within southwest of 1624 west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 76.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Seven Lakes Oil Field Service as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That's carried. On to 7.2.
This is Development Permit Application 2023-D-070 for VASER Construction. The applicant is applying for rear yard variance from 16.4 feet to 3.6 feet for an existing detached garage. The property is located in the hamlet of Fort Kent at a cul-de-sac east of the 51st Street and 51st Avenue intersection. Adjacent properties are residential parcels and a quarter section remnant. The applicant applied for a development permit for a garage and a building permit for the foundation of the garage in 2014. The conditions of the issued development permit stated a 3.3-foot setback from the rear property lines unless the garage door faced a public lane, in which case a 16.4-foot setback would be required. The applicant continued construction of the garage without proper building permits and the orientation of the garage where it would require a 16.4-foot setback. The property is now listed for sale, and the applicant would like to resolve this noncompliance. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 23, 2023, and we received no response. Our recommendation for development application 2023-D-070 is refuse the request for rear yard variance from 16.4 feet to 3.6 feet for the existing garage as a request is greater than the 25% allowable as per Section 20.1 of the Land Use Bylaw. The applicant/owner would be required to remove the building or obtain a building permit and relocate the building to meet the rear yard setback of 16.4 feet, or reorientate the building to position the garage door to the east to meet the minimum rear yard setback of 3.3 feet.
Yeah, Counselor Crick.
So is the garage encroaching on the rear setback as it is right now, or is it just because of the direction of the garage door?
Through the reef, to Counselor Crick. So because of the orientation of the garage shore, it is encroaching into the rear yard setback.
I drove by there yesterday and had a look at, had a look at it, and it's a small garage, and I don't, I guess I don't really see the issue. I was not contacted by anyone. I just saw it in the council package and thought I'd drive by and have a look. So to me, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal, other than the fact that they shouldn't have built a garage without the proper permit in the first place.
Yeah. Counselor, oh, sorry. Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, I'm just, this one reminds me of another one that was just built in North Shore Heights. That's, the garage is like three feet from the Bow Launch Road. I mean, that was only built last year, so are those guys not compliant either? Because the garage, the door is like right there. I don't know if you've been out to the Bow Launch area, but anyways, it just reminds me of the exact same thing, and I mean, they built one there, no problem, right? So, and that's actually a busier than this back alley, right? So, are you familiar with that one at all?
Through the reef, to Counselor Skarsen. That is a different case. That's actually not even a road. So that would have been their side yard setback, not a backyard setback.
So what is that, what is that Bow Launch Road, then?
It's not a road. It's an actual parcel.
The, like, isn't it MD?
It's an MD parcel. It's, it's a titled piece of land. It's not a road.
Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, it's another one of these tough ones because they knew the rules, they chose not to follow them. And so here again, you know, they're just asking for forgiveness. And so it's, you know, it's just unfortunate because it's just, people just figure, well, I'll just do what I want, and I'll just ask for forgiveness later, and it's, you know, it's just really not right. I mean, there's regulations for that because you don't want a garage that close to the, to the alleyway or whatever, so that when they're pulling out, they're gonna, you know, people don't see them coming out. I mean, there's, there's rules for that. There's regulations for that. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but we just keep saying, oh, yeah, no problem. They've already done it, so we'll let them have it. But like, they knew. They knew what the regulations were.
Yes, Counselor Crick.
Yeah, I agree with you 100% Counselor Swiger, but in this case, the garage is quite small. There's, it's essentially a farmer's field across the other side of the back alley. So I really don't see any issue with it. It's, they're not going to be parking it. There's not, no, not going to be parking a vehicle with a trailer in there or anything. It's going to be something quite small in the garage. So I guess I'm prepared to make the motion that we approve the development as it is, let them keep it there.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
So if we're going to do that, then why don't we just change the regulations for everybody in Fort Kent and Ardmore? I mean, because, you know, what's, what are the neighbors going to say now? Well, this guy can do it. Why can't I? So everyone else is going to be doing the same thing. And if that's what you're okay with, then maybe you relook at the, you know, the bylaws and regulations.
Well, and to that line, I, it's wrong to build, build something without the permit and then come ask for forgiveness later. I totally understand that. But I can't bring myself to, in this case, like, I drove by there. It didn't look like, to me, like, it matters. Personally, I'd rather, if I had the garage, I'd rather have the door facing the other way, just so I could see the garage door from the house. But it's, the garage is there, so I can't bring myself to tell somebody to pick up the garage and turn it or tear it down based on the direction of the door when I don't think it's going to interfere with anything else. And there was adjacent landowner's letter sent out with no concerns. So I'd say in this case, we would just let it sit there, and they paid 100, extra $175 for applying for a permit a second time. So they have paid a little bit extra. It's not a lot, but.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, then Counselor Swiger.
Yeah. I concur with Counselor Swiger. I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, why, why would anybody want to, you know, abide to any of the bylaws if we let this, this one here slide? I mean, there was rules. I mean, they could have applied. They could have appealed it. They, you know, there's a lot of things instead of just saying we're not going to. I mean, we have, we have some delegate, some, some, some more, some more development applications coming through, and if we say no for whatever, whatever various reasons, they just can do whatever we, you know, they want and then just ask for forgiveness later, right? So I mean, you know, where are we going with this? So I mean, you know, where are we going with this? I think there's a appeal process that should have been followed.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I just wondered if, you know, maybe I'd throw this back at our administration though, so we don't get into this issue, is there, is there a way to monitor these? When they apply for a permit, can we not kind of go out and look and say, you know, I don't know, I just think there's maybe an easier way to handle this before it gets to the stage like yours later.
But I think this was built before they even applied for anything, correct?
Yeah.
Well, it says they applied in twenty fourteen.
The second time.
Twenty fourteen, it says.
Better let her talk, she knows.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, they did, they applied for the foundation in two thousand and fourteen, but they never applied to continue building the garage up. So right now, the actual substructure of the building is unpermitted, unpermitted. So either way, if they want to reorientate the building, they would have to get a building permit. If they were allowed to keep the structure as is, they would have to get a building permit. So the foundation is fine, it's just the orientation of the building is incorrect as per the development permit.
So what I can tell from the picture, the garage isn't built, there's just a trailer sitting on there, is that correct, or?
The garage is built.
It's built, okay. Oh, it's last year's picture, okay. Because my picture just shows a trailer, unless I'm dreaming.
And Mr. Reeve, can I just ask the C.A.O. to maybe comment on, is there, is there a way we can kind of stop this from happening by doing a quick, you know, drive out?
Okay, that's, that's not the same picture, well, not the first one anyway.
So through the reef to council, the issue here is, they received the permit to build the foundation, and then it's the orientation of the building that is at issue, and they decided to build the rest of the garage without a permit, without, so I don't know how we would, I don't know how, I don't know what, how I would just send staff out to just go check stuff when people start building. If they don't have a permit, we don't know that there's any building going on. So the issue here is that they had applied for a building permit, we'd have at least had a building permit triggered, which would have allowed us to go out and do some kind of inspection based on the land use by law, but without the permit, the only thing they had permitted was put a foundation in, foundation was fine, it's the orientation of the building, I believe, is the issue.
Through the reef to Counselor Swiger. If they would have proceeded with actually getting the building permit for the rest of the building, the building inspector would have attended the site, but this is also, puts the onus on the builders to call for the required inspections.
Okay, I would just say, if I was gonna build, when I build a garage or some build the foundation, I, I can, you can tell looking at it, which way the door's gonna be. But, you know, maybe this is not that, I don't know, whatever. I'm just thinking, we keep getting these, and I'm not happy with it, but.
I think what happens, exactly, kind of what the administration has said, the builder ignored some of the rules, whoever the builder was, everybody just ignored the bylaws and said, we're gonna do what we want, so.
Yes, I believe if we just let this go, that we're just gonna set a precedent, that people just build what they want, we're gonna have to, we're gonna set a course of action here, that's not good, so. He knew the consequence, he's gonna have to pay the consequences, he didn't follow the, get the permits, and that's it. Do we have a fine in place or something for something like this, or we just, we tell them that you gotta switch the garage door, and that's what we're gonna, like, what's gonna happen here?
They do have a development permit in place, so through the land use by law, we do not have the ability to fine them. If we did want to proceed with a fine through the Alberta Safety Codes Act, we could talk to our inspections group about that.
And if, if, you know, it's a tough situation to put in here.
Mr. Reeve, they're, they're not here, are they? Is there anybody to speak, like, if I said, you know, I'm not happy with it, can they reorient the garage door? Or is this, you've seen it, Counselor Crick, could they reorient the garage door? Or is it too narrow then to drive into?
Well, it's, I don't know what the dimensions of it are, it's probably a twenty by twenty or twenty-four by twenty-four garage. So it's a pretty major renovation to rent, move the garage door.
Yeah, because you would have built a building, you know, your, everything to fit the garage door, and now you're gonna have to, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing to do.
There's, it's basically, it's, the concrete slab is sitting in the right spot, there's nothing wrong with where it's sitting, it's just the direction of the garage door. So because the overhead door faces the back alley, it doesn't comply with the, with the land use by law.
No, no, I get it, I just wonder if we, you know, turn it down, can they kind of do it without moving the entire building? And you're thinking, no.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a carpenter, but that would be a lot.
That's more work than building a garage.
And they probably put, they probably put the peak, you know, you put the peak, probably, what's that, north and south there, or that, no, that'd be east and west, they?
North and south.
North and south, so the peak is probably going north and south, and now you, yeah, it's just, you're gonna have, yeah, it's just.
You can't put a door on the side, it's not heights, the height's not there.
You know what, if, if somebody built a garage and it was, it was interfering with the neighborhood, actually interfering with something, and they didn't have the permit, then I would totally say, yeah, tear it down or move it or reorient it. But in my opinion, this one doesn't interfere with anything, there's no concerns from the neighbors, so.
I guess it's just someday that there might be houses on the other side, don't know that, but, you know, we don't know the future, but that's, that's probably why we have that in place, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we do, any other comments before we have a, we have a motion here, a move by Counselor Crick that council approves development application two thousand twenty-three D zero seven zero for rear yard variance from sixteen four to three point six feet for existing garage without, within southeast six, sorry, thirty-six sixty-one five west of the fourth M, if it is concluded that the development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with the effect of the use, enjoyment, or value of the neighborhood properties as per part three, section twenty point three A I and double I of the variance authorities with the following conditions, all those conditions. It's a long one. Yes, any discussion, and yes, Counselor Scarsen.
I'm just curious, so then, so they applied because they're selling, they wanna sell the place, or they sold it? Like, is that what you said?
The sale was in process, but fell through.
But, oh, fell through, so then, it's like, is it, they can't sell it without the proper permit, is that, is that why, or?
That would be buyer beware on the part of the purchaser.
So that, so the buyer buys a place, they'd have to look and see if there was the right permits for everything?
That is correct.
So.
And through the reef to council, oftentimes, the bank looks for a certificate, a certificate of compliance, and oftentimes, the M.D. is asked to provide those on, on property. In this case, we'd be unable to provide until council approves it, that the, that, so anybody wants to buy it, it would be a non-compliant property, and as a result, would probably be difficult to A, finance through a mortgage company, and B, might be difficult to sell because nobody wants to purchase a property that's gonna walk into a potential fairly major renovation.
So it's essentially voting for this motion will allow them to leave the garage where it is, sell the property, and when it looks like they built it, they're trying to bring it into compliance, so I say we just let it go and keep the garage sitting where it is.
Thank you, any other comments? All right, I'll call for the vote then. That's defeated, thank you, gentlemen. Onto seven point three, what time is it, we're still got a bit.
This is development application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash zero nine two for Norman and Colleen Rangette. The applicant is applying for a front yard variance from one hundred and twenty-five feet to twenty-three feet, and a rear yard variance from ninety-eight point four feet to forty-five feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage and a residential shop. The property is located on Range Road four 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 on the south side of Crane Lake. Adjacent properties are residential parcels, quarter sections, and remnants. The applicant would like to construct a new residence and shop on their land. The quarter section is fragmented by Range Road four 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 bordered by a recreational use quarter section to the west and substandard lot, country residential lots to the east. The CR lots have a setback of twenty-five feet from the front property line, this variance would allow a similar setback. Section forty-one point three of the land use by law states a, that a setback of thirty meters, ninety-eight point four feet is required from the high water mark of a water body to which the crown claims ownership. This setback is not required when there is an environmental reserve located between the water and the lot. The variance request would set the house back a similar distance to the residential setbacks on the lots to the east. A referral was sent to the M.D. Infrastructure Services with no concerns reported. They stated that there is a robust fence constructed approximately three feet inside the property line with a steel gate at the entrance, which would protect the lot from traffic. The speed limit for this road is thirty kilometers an hour. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we received one letter of support commending the Rangettes' respect for the bed-in shore of Crane Lake. As per section twenty of the land use by law, variances may be considered when there are practical difficulties unique to the land, and when they will not interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash zero nine two is refuse the request for a front yard variance from twenty, one twenty-five to twenty-three feet for a single-family dwelling with garage and a residential shop as the request is greater than the twenty-five percent allowable as per section twenty point one of the land use by law. Alternatively, council may choose to approve development permit number two thousand twenty-three dash D dash zero nine two if it is concluded that the development may not, would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties as per section three, or part three, section twenty point three, A one and two of the variance authority. We would recommend that the following conditions, approved building permits are required as per the Safety Codes Act, applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on site in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per section two of the Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw number eighteen twelve. As per section sixty-nine point six of the land use by law, number sixteen sixty-seven, a minimum setback shall be side yard, six meters.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make a motion to approve this one.
Okay. Counselor Scarsen.
So just to be clear, they, there's a building there they wanna add on to, is that what it is?
They would be demolishing the existing structures.
Because, isn't there, like, there's quite a few different resident, like, houses on that lot already, or?
I believe just one and outbuildings, old farm buildings.
And then they wanna build that out, the new one closer to the lake?
Scroll down, please.
Like, what's the variance exactly, that, like, they're, is it the back line here, the back property, or?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarsen, it would be from the north property line, which would be the rear, and from the front property line, the south property line.
Well, it just looks like it's not really any closer than what's there already, right?
Yes, that is correct, the existing structure would be considered non-conforming does, because it doesn't comply with the setbacks.
Yes, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Counselor Scarsen, you? Still thinking about it?
Yeah.
Okay, so just a comment, if you look at the aerial photo, this is a bit of a different situation here, but the aerial photo shows like, all the places east of that property are, you know, have that setback, that, like, they're close to the lake, and so he just wants to build a home to live there, you know, in, in, in the same area that the other homes are, so, and it's kind of weird because of that road that runs through there that really wasn't a road, it was just an old farm trail that now is the road throughout, and it wanders in and out of there, but, so, where his house is now, he's got a fantastic house that they've built, but they're gonna tear it down and build the new house there.
So are you saying then that all those other houses are not conforming?
No, I think, because I think they, they're a different zoning or something, I don't know if it was, because that's a quarter section, and those were CR one or something.
Through the reef to Counselor Swiger, you are correct, it is a different zoning, it is CR, and they are substandard to our current CR zoning, because they are under one point five lots, acres in size. They, they have a smaller setback because of their zoning and because of their size, and he is zoned agricultural.
So maybe that lot is zoned improperly, or?
No, through the reef to Counselor Scarsen.
So I, I'm just curious, like, there's a lot here, this one to the north of the road, I guess, is zoned agricultural? Is that what you're saying?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarsen, so he has most of the quarter section. It is still zoned agricultural because that is the default zoning, and it is fragmented by the road. So it is still zoned agricultural, to do the subdivision in the past, they had to rezone those lots to the east.
I'm talking about the one that's highlighted green on the north side of the road?
Yes, that is agricultural.
That's agricultural?
Agricultural zoning, yes.
I understand what you're saying, it just, to me, that's the bigger issue. I mean, you've got, he's, there's all kinds of non-agricultural, it's not an agricultural lot, right?
That is the default zoning.
And it's agricultural, so why is he even here getting permits, can't they just do whatever they want anyways?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarsen, but, yeah, they do need permits for residential development.
That was a jab at farmers.
I don't know, it just seems goofy to me, it's agricultural, and it's on the lake, and, yeah, so, whatever. They'll build it either way, I suppose, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Through the reef to council, council alone controls zoning. If council would like to see that land rezoned, or that fragmented parcel rezoned to something other than agricultural, then it would just be a matter of council directing administration to begin that process, to rezone that to something that might be more appropriate. But that would be up to council.
Let's just approve it and let him build his house and move on.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a move by Counselor Swiger that the council approves development permit application number two thousand twenty-three D zero nine two for a front yard variance from one hundred and twenty-five feet to twenty-three feet for a single-family dwelling with a garage and a residential shop within northeast thirty-two sixty-three fourth west of the fourth M as per part three, section twenty, variance authority, part six, section thirty-two, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use by law with the following conditions, one through, how many other conditions are there? One through four? All right, any discussion on this motion by Counselor Swiger, yes, go ahead, Counselor Scarsen?
Again, I just wanna point out that, I mean, it's fine, I guess, I mean, there's a house there, he wants to build another house. But, you know, administration, again, requested denying it because it doesn't meet our standards, but we just denied a guy who wants to back into an empty field, basically, right? So, I mean, it's just, the way we do things is just so goofy sometimes, so, anyway, that's just my comment, so.
Thank you, any other discussion? Yes?
Mr. Reeve, Counselor Scarsen raises a good point. So understand the administration's point of view on these, we are only recommending refusal, not because we don't believe that either one of these properties would be perfectly fine, we are only recommending refusal because that is what council's land use by law indicates, and we don't have the authority to recommend an approval that would be against the land use by law, only council has that discretion to vary those decisions. So our recommendation to refuse is only based on the land use by law that directs us to refuse it because it's outside what we can approve.
That's correct. You've built this house a little ways to the right, and it's no problem, like, it, everything changes. Yes, Counselor, Sliptrix tried to cut you off there before. If we go forward this, can we get them to apply to, or can we rezone it then from agriculture, and this way, we're not gonna be? Well, if this goes ahead, you don't, you don't have to, yeah, right? Any other comments? All right, I'm going to call for the vote then. That's that's carried, thank you. We're gonna we're gonna take like a five-minute, ten-minute break right now, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, right click? Okay. So it's very, I'm pleased to see Reeve and council again bring you an annual update. So first and foremost, um, I guess I should announce myself again is I'm Glenda Farnin. I'm the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Stars. I've had the pleasure of working with your council and previous councils for many years now, so this is your annual update. First and foremost, I'd like to draw your attention to the lower right-hand corner in the fact that after almost thirty-eight years of serving Albertans, that Stars is going through a bit of a rebrand, so you see just a little bit different logo there as well as the fact, you know, we've always been about saving lives. But now with the latest in technology and state-of-the-art equipment that's available, we want to take that one step further. So a little bit of a new vision is saving lives by providing critical care anywhere. Oh. Not. Okay. No. Thank you. So previously, you know, we have had a ten-year affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services for twenty percent government funding. That expired in two thousand twenty. We've been year to year ever since. Last year, uh, in the spring, Alberta Health Services made an announcement that they would be looking to move to fifty percent government funding in Alberta for Stars, which would also align them with what we were already receiving from Saskatchewan government as well as an even higher rate from Manitoba government. So I'm pleased to announce that at the very end of the year last year, that Alberta Health Services did provide the top-up for fifty percent of operational funding. So costs, the average cost is ten million dollars per base in Alberta, three bases in Alberta, Grand Prairie, Edmonton, and Calgary. So they topped up to a fifteen million dollar operational cost. This does not include the Emergency Link Center, which is our dispatch center, as well as any educational costs. So on the expenditure side, more than eighty percent of all expenditures are aviation and medically related. The smaller piece is the Emergency Link Center as well as base operations and administration costs at twelve percent. This is our fourth year that we remain at twelve percent for administration costs. CRA allows up to thirty-five percent for charitable entities for operation or for administration costs. So we very much feel that we are continuing to do our due diligence in this area. Will it work? Oh. No. Do you mind? Thank you. So currently, we want to show you where we're at with municipal support across the province of Alberta as well as into northeastern B C. Everything that you see green is an annual municipal supporter of Stars. We've just added five more rural municipalities as well as five more urban municipalities, so we welcome them to join us in a united effort that we work together to ensure that we all have access to a robust health and safety network. Currently, uh, Lesser Slave River, Lac Lebiche, and Two Hills have pending requests in front of them, so we are very hopeful that we are starting to unite the entire province, that we're all working together. So currently, we have nine municipal leaders that are in the red boxes. Now, they have been long-term supporters some since the very beginning of Stars. And so they have all received logo recognition. We've just recently welcomed Sturgeon County. We had a logo unveiling unveiling for them a few weeks back. So all of these municipalities in the red boxes have logo representation on the helicopter as well, you know, it's very important that, you know, we continue to work together. So currently, we are generating just over two million dollars per year in sustainable operational support for Stars in Alberta, including the entire region of Peace River Regional District in northeastern B C. It's very much a factor for them that Stars out of Grand Prairie is the only resource like Stars that's available to their residents, so they have been the long-term supporter for seventeen years now. Currently, we have just over ninety percent that are also building Alberta regional partnerships. So regional partnerships is the fact that every town or village that lies within a county's boundaries is also a supporter of Stars on a per capita basis. The M D of Bonneville is on a fixed rate at twelve thousand dollars per year, and we certainly appreciate that because then these are the areas that we know what we can count on each year as the mission rate continues to increase. Next, please. So here is a five-year overview, including up to May thirty-first of this year, for mission statistics lying within M D of Bonneville. So you can see that we do cover many different areas as well as you have very busy hospitals in Bonneville as well as Cold Lake. Now, these missions usually critical interfacility transfers occur where local ground ambulance has delivered the patient to the local hospital, but because it is of a critical nature, then Stars is called to come in and get these patients as well. So within the M D of Bonneville, on a total annual average of about forty-one missions per year, and there's also been two missions so far this year in the first week of June. Next slide, please. But it's important to understand that, you know, it's it's all about neighbors helping neighbors. We all travel, we all commute to neighboring municipalities, and they all come through the M D of Bonneville as well. So now you can see that there's been a significant increase when you include your bordering neighbors in the fact that from the previous in comparing the exact same timeframe from two hundred and twenty-one missions within the M D of Bonneville to now six hundred and fifty-five missions throughout your neighboring municipalities. So it's uh, again, you know, it's very much a united effort, and any one of these other municipalities could include missions that were for your residents or vice versa. Next slide, please. So this is to to bring it closer to home, I'm very excited to bring you this information. This is ten years in the making. So we'll look at the left-hand side first. We were able to access data back to two thousand ten, use utilizing patient postal code, so no other patient information, only the postal code where residents lived at the time that they were flown by Stars. Now, please keep in mind that this is not a true accuracy of um, Stars missions flown because if we did not have the patient's postal code, they are not included in this particular data. So back to two thousand ten, there's been a total of two hundred and sixty-eight residents that lie within the M D of Bonneville boundaries, so it includes other municipalities, more specifically for Bonneville itself, one hundred and forty-one residents flown by Stars. Now, these would also include all rural residents that have a Bonneville postal code. But more interestingly enough is on the right-hand side. These two hundred and sixty-eight residents have been flown from four different Stars bases across two provinces, across fifteen different Alberta municipalities. The red dots represent all of the areas where these patients were flown, and the listing for the area, the locations are across the bottom. This is a testament to our partnership, that we together are ensuring that everyone has access to a health and safety network, no matter where they travel across western Canada. Your residents have access to Stars. Next slide, please. So this Emergency Link Center is located in Calgary. They receive over thirty-six thousand emergency requests every year, one hundred per day. Now, of course, we do not fly on one hundred missions per day, but we have um, we have we work very closely with nine-one-one dispatch, and we have access to every available resource in order to continue to work together, collaborate together for what is the best resource available and the best hospital, receiving hospital for each particular patient. Previously, I had said to you that um, we were doing a pilot project with our transport physicians being in the Emergency Link Center. So now that is in place. It has had miraculous results. So our transport physicians are taking a shift in the Emergency Link Center. They are providing critical care guidance for all calls that are deemed critical, regardless of the mode of transport. So they could be going by, that patient could be going by ground ambulance or Alberta Health Services fixed wing. It is still our transport physicians that are providing the medical guidance, so that critical care piece. In addition, now, we are also able to um, work more closely with your physicians and nurses by having the transport physicians in the Link Center, that they can FaceTime, they can actually collaborate together online for, you know, even if Stars is not available, they still have access to this transport physician. So that's another key piece that we're moving forward at with later, you know, the greatest in technology now. Next slide, please. Of course, um, I previously had brought you information about the new fleet, the new helicopter, the H-one-four-five. I'm pleased to announce now that we did receive the tenth and final helicopter in October. So the complete fleet is is done as far as and the campaign. The campaign is completed. Over a one hundred and fifty million dollar capital campaign. We have now sold off our previous BK-one-seventeen fleet, so those funds were attributed to the campaign to complete the campaign. So all ten helicopters are operational now across western Canada, and all ten helicopters are paid for. So with that, you know, it outperforms the previous BK-one-seventeen model in speed, range, and fuel efficiency. The pilots say that this particular model now has with fuel efficiency approximately an extra thirty minutes of flight time in any direction. As well, you see the unique finestrone tail, the enclosed tail rotor now, so no more exposed tail rotor, also a significant safety feature. It has advanced avionics on the left-hand side, you can see the cockpit autopilot, auto hover, and of course, last year, we also celebrated more than twenty years that Stars was the very first civilian organization in Canada to be able to have night vision goggle capability and fly at night. More than fifty percent of our calls are at night, so literally, tens of thousands of patients have been saved because we have that ability to fly at night. Next slide, please. So of course, with the latest in technology now with the brand-new helicopters to service for hopefully at least the next three decades, it's important about the back end of the helicopter as well. You can see from the photo that it's very much an airborne intensive care unit environment, but I wanted to bring you just a small glimpse into some of the highly specialized equipment as well. And that makes it an intensive care unit environment and our ability to bring that hospital environment right to the scene of a patient. So we'll start with the handheld Istat lab. You can see it's the size of a cell phone, very small, compact, but it with only two drops of blood can provide in less than two minutes the the uh, blood results for hemoglobin, blood gases, even electrolytes. These are all vital components for our crew when they are managing multiple pain management drugs for a severe trauma patient. Next slide, please. The Hamilton T-one ventilator. Now, it is a full of fully-featured ICU ventilator, just like in the tertiary cares hospitals, but this one is made especially for transport systems. And so and better yet, it all accommodates all sizes of patients, adult, pediatric, even neonatal. You know, until we get patient information, we don't know what size of patient we are going to be attending to, so this is a vital piece of equipment. Two units of universal blood, this is blood that can be accepted by any one of us. Stars is recognized as a leader in innovation, and we were the very first helicopter E O S program in North America to bring this advancement in life-saving measures with blood onboard. It literally has been the difference between life and death for many patients. Video laryngoscope. Now that, you can see that our crews can actually view the trachea right on screen. This is an advancement in intubation, was widely used the last few years, especially during COVID, when most patients all had to be intubated. This allows our crew to actually view the trachea so that especially in difficult airway management, so for such patients as a trauma patient, possibly a burn victim, maybe someone that's been crushed on impact, it's really important that we can effectively and immediately intubate a patient that can no longer breathe for themselves. So this is a vital piece of equipment as well. Next slide, please. The EZ-I-O drill. Now, we've had this for quite a few years, but it keeps getting perfected each year, and you can see now it's a very tiny, small handheld drill, only used in time-sensitive, life-threatening situations when we must have immediate IV access. So when you're dealing with a severe trauma patient, this allows us to drill a small little hole into a shoulder bone or a leg bone and have immediate IV access. You can imagine for stabilization and pain management of a severe trauma patient, this is a vital piece of equipment. Handheld ultrasound, now we previously had ultrasound, but it was a great big boxy type of thing, not very portable, that we would have to use and have at the foot of the stretcher. Now, it is again, the size of a cell phone. It provides rapid diagnosis test results for collapsed lungs, trauma-related internal bleeding, heart abnormalities, even fetal compromise in ill or injured pregnant mothers. So now, with the way the new helicopters are equipped with integrated Wi-Fi, Bluetooth, and satellite connectivity, with these test results, we can actually in real time transmit the test results to the receiving doctors at the receiving hospitals. So now they can expedite their treatment plans along with our transport physicians being in the Emergency Link Center. They are now coordinating on the back end all of the logistical arrangements with the hospital for, you know, whether or not to schedule a neurosurgeon or the cardiac cath lab, whatever the case may be, for the patient. That way, once we arrive with the patient, we can completely bypass emergency. That patient can go directly into trauma surgery or the cardiac cath lab or whatever the case may warrant for the particular patient's needs. Pain management drugs, we carry a plethora of pain management drugs, including the thrombolytics for stroke patients or query stroke patients. We have agreements with all hospitals across western Canada who that are on the stroke protocol. When you're dealing with a possible stroke patient, it's mandatory that they must have a CAT scan before we can apply the thrombolytic drugs in order to know what type of stroke it is. And so with that, our transport physicians, once again, in the Link Center, they will contact the nearest hospital that we are en route to with a CAT scanner on the stroke protocol so that we can take that patient directly in, have them CAT scanned, and if it warrants the thrombolytic drugs, then we have that to completely, you know, in many cases, reverse all effects. And that can be represent more than one million dollars per patient in downstream cost to our overall healthcare system just by being able to to do that and reverse effects, you know, so the patient has no residual after effects. Previously, our youngest stroke victim was a twenty-seven-year-old male at a very remote rig site. Can you imagine for the next fifty years with paralysis and everything else, the downstream costs to our overall healthcare system instead of being able to reverse the effects? So this is also a key. On some of our calls, transport physicians will also accompany our crew, especially for very sick patients like a septic patient at a rural hospital like Bonneville or Cold Lake Hospital, so then that that way. So then that, that way, we have physician-to-physician consultation for a really sick patient. And so we do carry the physician's kit, which includes the central venous catheterization lines, as well as even a temporary pacemaker that may need to be inserted while en route to the cardiac cath lab to stabilize a heart patient. So this is just, just a small example of some of the really highly specialized equipment. And again, being able to bring this right to the, to the scene, even on the side of a road or to a homestead. It, it's a really important factor, especially for rural residents. Next slide, please. So of course, you know, you have the latest in technology with new helicopters. We have advanced, state-of-the-art equipment. But it's also important that you have the very highest expertise in critical care in your crew. And so there is an air medical transport conference simulation competition each year. This is worldwide, international, for all helicopter EMS programs throughout the, the world. And they come once a year to this particular, very rigorous simulation competition. They recreate scenes. You have to manage multiple trauma patients. You only have a team of two. It's, uh, it's quite amazing to see, very rigorous competition. And so what STARS always does is, we've been participating in this competition for twenty years. We host our own internal competition to allow our team members from all our bases to compete against each other in order to have only one team of two each year to have the honor of representing STARS internationally at this competition. In the twenty years that STARS has had a crew member participate in this competition, STARS has been in the world top three all twenty years. Last year, this is our team from the Saskatoon base that won first place internationally. And this marks the seventh time in those twenty years that STARS has also won first place. We are very proud to bring the highest level of critical care available in Alberta to your residents. Next slide, please. So in closing, I want to thank you, MD of Bonneville. I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for your ongoing dedication to STARS. And most of all, I want to thank you for your continued support. Currently, you're on a fixed pledge of twelve-thousand dollars per year, and this is in conjunction with your council term through 2025. This gives us that stability, along with all of those other municipalities that you've seen on that green map across Alberta and into B.C. That is sustainability for STARS. We are averaging ten missions per day. Recently, we've seen about a thirty percent increase. We are seeing much, um, the strife and downturn effects of COVID. We're seeing a lot of respiratory distress from the wildfires that we're needing to respond to the rural community hospitals as well. So a significant increase lately. You know, previously, when STARS started out, we, at, with Calgary base only, we flew fifty, sixty missions per year. Last year, across our six bases, we threw, we flew more than thirty-five-hundred missions, half of those in Alberta. We need your continued support. So we appreciate very much that you're a solid member of our municipal support initiative. A life is literally saved every day. But it's partnership that has made that possible for almost thirty-eight years now. We thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for the presentation. So well done. Any questions or comments? Yeah, all right, let's give her a clap.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Deputy Reed Fadiv.
Hi, thanks for that. So the ten percent, uh, that is not on the program, do they have their own, like, systems in place, like their own, uh, eve, uh, like evacuation systems? Like cypris, do they, or do they, like, do they have their own helicopter service? No?
No, no. STARS still, just because they're not supporters yet, does not mean that we don't go there.
Yeah.
You know, we regularly go there, and we are a charitable entity, and we have been for thirty-eight years, right? So that anyone that needs STARS can have STARS. A lot of this, I am the only one in the entire province. I work with all councils across the entire province. So some of these, it's just been that I have not been able to, to get there, which I have now for three more of them. So we're very much starting to close the loop. And, you know, there is, um, a vast array of contributions. So urban municipalities pretty much are at a minimum two dollars per capita. That ranges up to about seven dollars and fifty cents per capita for some long-range ones that have incrementally each year, maybe, you know, twenty-five cents, fifty cents, have increased their commitment. Then we have those municipal supporters, leaders that you saw, that they have now taken significant, um, fixed values and put that into their annual budgets under their protective services. That's who we work with every day. So now they've acknowledged STARS, and we are a line item in their protective services budget. Most of those are in upwards of one hundred to two-hundred thousand dollars per year in sustainable support annually, that we are a line item. And then for those others, it ranges anywhere from two dollars up to ninety dollars per capita for others, that, you know, they just, they pick a dollar value that fits well and, and it's a fixed rate, much like yourselves. So there, there's a vast array of commitments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sarsky.
Sounds like we're the only ones at a dollar per person.
Well, I, you are in a current, you know, fixed pledge until the end of your council term. Um, I'll give you a pre-warning that in 2025, I will be asking, or 2024, I will be asking if you would consider to increase to a two-dollar per capita rate.
Counselor Sipchak.
I just want to say thank you for the services you guys provide.
Thank you very much for your partnership.
We've utilized it many times.
Yes.
Yeah, touch pretty close to our, both of our families here lately, uh, so, uh, means a lot.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, and I hope that, that, um, it really substantiated our partnership with the Postal Code Project in seeing many other areas outside of the MD of Bonneville where your residents have been served. You know, I think that's, that's the value of the partnership.
I just have another comment, I guess. I don't know if it's possible or not, but, um, we just had a presentation just before yours. It'd be cool to have one of these helicopters out at the airshow with a display. I don't know if that's possible or if that's shooting way up, but if we had that set up, it'd be quite a, there's, how many people did they say that comes through that door? Up to thir, um, could be thirty thousand people in, in a year. That'd be quite a thing to have a STARS ambulance at the, our military base here. And, uh, that'd be something to maybe hook you guys up to have them at the show.
Well, we, occasionally, we do have those requests. Um, is your show, airshow like every other year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I would suggest that we look for the next time because it does take a really long timeframe to plan where the helicopters are going to be, which ones are going to be down for maintenance, all of that. So it's usually, we need at least a six-month window in order to identify, you know, um, hourly maintenance, which ones are going to be down, which ones are going to get moved around to different provinces.
Yeah, this is a airshow for 2024, so it's.
Okay, so then this is timely.
Year, over a year from now, correct? It's in July, correct?
So.
Yeah, so.
I would suggest that, um, whoever's in charge of that then would, um, send me an email or something with the request so that I can forward it on and we can do some planning and see whether or not that would be available.
We could, uh, we could see if the chief would be interested in that, and then we could forward, like, I'm sure our people here can do that. Yes, go ahead.
I'll just put in a plug, Mr. Reed, for, for Mr. Ken Puszek. And you probably don't know Ken Puszek, but he was at the Oil and Gas Show promoting the heck out of STARS, had a big display set up, it was done very well. And that was, uh, last weekend, so.
That was this last weekend, correct? Yes, yes. We thank you very much. That's been an ongoing partnership for several years now, too.
Yeah, so thirty thousand people coming through a great, that, through the gate there, that'd be quite a promotion for STARS. And if they were willing to let you guys come there, which I, I don't think they would say no to, I, I think it would be just a win-win for the whole, you know, all of Albertans. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I was just there, so we'll see.
Oh, we'll be, they'll be fine. Any other comments or, uh, no? Thank you once again for coming out. Appreciate all you guys. Do tell everyone there at STARS that we're so appreciative of you guys. God bless you guys.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate and have the opportunity once a year to bring you an annual update. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, I did bring you, um, a calendar.
Okay.
For Al's office, as well as, this is the latest newsletter. So I'd just like to point out, this is available, and you can read it on stars.ca, the Horizons newsletter, but I'd like to point out on the back page that after almost thirty-eight years, STARS flew its record mission. So it's quite an interesting story. It says that this particular mission, if it, you had to fly it a straight line, it was like flying from Calgary to Los Angeles. So again, the Emergency Link Center was involved in, you know, all of the binding the fuel caches, binding the areas to get fuel. This particular patient was in a very remote region, needed that intensive care unit environment, needed the blood onboard, needed everything. And it's a good news story. He was, um, actually reunited with his crew out of the Grand Prairie Base and is now doing everything he can to help support us, so. Really good news story.
Great, great story. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for option one, please.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts presentation by STARS Air Ambulance on the update on their new initiatives and missions statistics as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, a call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. We have another delegation here from Cold Lake Sailing Association. I believe it's that gentleman right here.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, your worship, honorable counselors. My name is Colin DeClerc. I'm the current commodore of the Cold Lake Sailing Association, and I wanted to come here today and take this opportunity to thank the MD of Bonneville for the support that they gave us last year in our first Learn to Sail initiative that we launched up at, uh, in, in Cold Lake. Your support was, uh, absolutely necessary for us to launch the program that we had. Uh, the program that we offer is a Learn to Sail program for youth and adults, the first of its kind ever in, in Cold Lake. And we got off to kind of a slow start last year, so we just, I just wanted to update you on the status of our initiative. And, uh, so we got off to a late, a cold, a late start last year as a result of approval process and getting all our assets in place. But we were successful in providing a Learn to Sail program to a few interested adults, uh, la, later in the year last year. This year, um, we're off to a bit of a better start, and, uh, we have a group of eight teachers, actually, going to participate in our Learn to Sail program on June the twenty-ninth. And we have ongoing, um, registrations for our program this year. We offer a CAN-SAIL program, which is a nationally certified, uh, skill-based program that people can work through at, at their leisure type thing. And, uh, yeah, that's kind of where we are. And we're here today to, uh, ask for your continued support. We have made an application through the community. I believe it's the community, it's the Community Action Grant Application that we submitted back in, in March. So, uh, yeah, just, uh, thanks again for your continued support. And it has enabled us to provide the community with, uh, a, a skill-based program. And from that, they learn seamanship, teamwork, life skills, just a whole bunch of things that are applicable to everyday life and, uh, plus a sport initiative. So that's pretty much all I've got. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but thank you again.
Oh, you're very welcome, sir. Questions, please, or comments? Yes, go ahead. Counselor Swiger.
Question about, uh, advertising. I got a couple of grandkids probably love to, you know, s, sign up for something like that, but I'm just wondering about the MD's web pages. Are you advertising through the MD at all, or could you?
We, we don't advertise through the MD. I didn't even realize that was something that we could do through.
I'm not sure you can, but I think you can.
Website, pardon?
I think you can.
So that's great. We, we have a Facebook page, and we have a website, and we have numerous, uh, posters around Cold Lake, and we'll put some down here in Bonneville as well. And we have a QR code that you can just scan, and it'll take you to, uh, a chat click, uh, account that we have. And then our programs are all there. But the best way to, uh, learn about what we have to offer is on our Facebook page. It's the Cold Lake Sailing Association, and all the links are, are right there. So, uh, yeah, and we're actively, you know, looking for young adults, like in the sixteen-to-eighteen-year-olds, uh, range because we feel that, you know, logistics dictate that relatively, you know, maybe ten percent of the people that go through our program would be interested in becoming an instructor. And that we see as one of our bottlenecks to expansion is not having enough instructors to teach the general public. So if anybody is interested in sailing, and then one out of ten of those says they want to be an instructor, then we will help mentor them through the process with Alberta Sailing Association to become an instructor and thereby provide the community, community with an expanded program. So, yeah, Cold Lake Sailing Association on Facebook is absolutely the best way. And, uh, I will endeavor to get some posters spread around, uh, in Bonneville at various locations.
Thank you, anyone. All right, thank you for your presentation, sir. You have a great day.
Thank you for your time and attention.
All right. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen. Yes? All right. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the presentation by the Cold Lake Sailing Association on last year's startup activities and this year's plan of operations, including the possible plan for coach boat upgrades events as information. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto seven point four.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash zero-nine-eight for Scott Buchanan. The applicant is applying for an intensive recreation use for a private recreation retreat. The property is located northwest of Township Road six-three-four and Range Road, four-two-five, directly west of the Cold Lake Airport. Adjacent properties are residential parcels and quarter-section remnants. The applicant is applying for a private recreation retreat. They plan on developing six RV sites, six cabins, a glamping geodome, a gazebo, and an office with laundry, shower, and washroom facilities. The applicant submitted a development plan, site plan, proposed rules, and an extensive emergency services plan. As the proposed site is not lateral to the runway and does not include housing, there are no additional requirements in the land use bylaw regarding development near an airport. A referral was sent to the City of Cold Lake, MD Infrastructure Services, and Public Safety Department on two thousand twenty-three, or two, sorry, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we received no concerns. A referral was sent to the Cold Lake First Nations, and they were concerned about septic waste. The applicant will be utilizing porta-potties or composting toilets until a permitted septic system is installed. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash zero-nine-eight is approved a request for an intensive recreation use as per Part Six of the General Regulations and Part Seven, Section sixty-nine point two of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section sixty-nine point six of the Land Use Bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, the minimum setback shall be front yard thirty-eight meters from the center line of the adjacent public road, side and rear yard six meters. An approved building permit is required as per the Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Code Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered slash enclosed trailer. Shall comply with consolidated public safety bylaw number eighteen twelve regarding noise and nuisance. As per section fifty-two of the land use bylaw, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site. Do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic.
Thank you. Deputy Reece Fideau?
Yeah, it's a absolutely beautiful spot. Uh, it's been in the family for a long time, so, uh, it's gonna be well utilized. So I'd like to make the motion to approve this development application, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reece Fideau, for making a motion on behalf of counsel. The counsel approves development permit application number two zero two three D zero nine eight for intensive recreation use for a private recreation retreat within southeast thirty-sixty-three to west of the forest M as discretionary use pursuant to part six of the general regulations and part seven, section sixty-nine point zero of the land use bylaw for Scott Buchahan. Did I say that right?
Buchanan.
Buchanan, am I right? Butchered that one, sorry, Mr. Scott, as per the recommendations presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto seven point five.
This is development permit two thousand twenty-three dash D dash one zero three for Wanda Marsh. The applicant is applying for a saloon and events venue in an existing industrial shop. The property is located half a mile east of Highway eight eighty-two and Township Road six-ten intersection. Adjacent properties are a residential parcel, a quarter section, and remnants. The applicant is applying to convert their existing industrial shop into a saloon and events venue. They would like to host events such as weddings and reunions. The salon, uh, saloon would have an outdoor patio with food service and daily specials like steak nights. They would also like to have off-sales available. Uh, should the applicant be successful, they would have to comply with Alberta gaming, liquor, and cannabis regulations. This use could be considered an in- an eating and drinking facility, which is a permitted use in rural, commercial, and intensive recreation districts, and a discretionary use in hamlet, general, and industrial districts. Applying to rezone is an option if this development permit is refused. A referral was sent to the MD Public Safety Department with no response, response, uh, received. Uh, adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash one zero three is refused as the use is neither permitted or discretionary within the agricultural district. Alternatively, counsel may choose to approve development application two thousand twenty-three dash D dash, uh, sorry, one zero nine as per part three, section eighteen point four B. If it is concluded that the development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment of, and/or value of neighboring properties, administration would recommend the following conditions. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. If required, applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered slash enclosed trailer as per section two of the consolidated public safety bylaw number eighteen twelve.
Thank you.
And we do have the applicant here if you have some questions directly for her.
Yes, uh, Counselor Scarsen.
I'm just, uh, curious as to what would be the difference between, uh, this place and a place like Journey North where, um, you know, they're basically doing the same thing, but one is on a agricultural parcel, so they don't pay as many taxes as a commercial business? Is that right, or?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarsen, taxes are determined by, um, the use, but the difference between this and what Journey North is, Journey North, uh, is a cidery, so a winery. A winery is a discretionary use in the agricultural district of the land use bylaw, so we were able to recommend approval on that. This does not have the production side of, um, happening here, so that's why it didn't fit in with that category of use to put it in here for, uh, consideration.
So then you can just, um, have an agricultural parcel, let's say, and be able to open a bar into your shop? Is that what you're saying, or?
That is not what I am saying. It is, we have to recommend refusal because it is neither a permitted or discretionary use.
Yeah, but in the, uh, in the alternative, you go back to that last screen there, you said, you basically said it was fine with the right gas and sewer and the right building permit, right, and they put their garbage in their garbage bin, so.
Yes, as I have to recommend based off the land use bylaw, that is what I had to recommend, but counsel can work outside of the land use bylaw.
Yeah, so essentially you can, right? I mean, those are conditions, but.
Seal.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of counsel. Yeah, the land use bylaws is quite clear that this is not permitted or discretionary. Um, and, uh, Ms. Poehl has been absolutely correct in that we offer counsel options, um, but we're recommending that based on the fact that this is not re- this is not zoned for that particular activity. Now, the zoning has, uh, has very little to do with taxation. Taxation is based on the use of a property and not based on it, on its zoning. So the same, uh, the same use on two different zonings would essentially, um, create the same tax, uh, profile. Uh, but this is neither zoned, um, uh, permitted or discretionary, uh, so it would be our recommendation that if this wanted to move forward, that, uh, rezoning should be considered. And, um, and if you were, if counsel were to approve it, uh, much like the earlier conversation this morning, is what does that do then to future applications? Um, there's a reason why ag, we don't do, uh, we don't do wedding venues, et cetera, et cetera. There's a reason for those zoning, um, uh, profiles. And as a result, uh, um, ag is not, we don't consider ag to be the appropriate place for a bar and a wedding venue. If they would like to rezone that to something else, and then we can start having conversations about, if you're gonna have a bar and a restaurant on an ag property, well, what is the, what is the road, what is the traffic gonna look like? Are we gonna do it, are we gonna ask for a traffic count? Is that road, and I'm not familiar with the road, is it a gravel road? Is, are, are we gonna suddenly have, uh, you know, further dust control issues with a significantly increased traffic on the road? Those kind of issues would come up as part of that, uh, as a rezoning.
And then would it be, I mean, um, you know, of course, uh, Alberta liquor and gaming would have to be involved, and, you know, what do they require? Is that, you know, is that on us at all, like, as far as, you know, some of the things they have to be required to do, or?
I would, uh, draft a letter saying that they have an approval for this use, and they can apply through the licensing process through Alberta liquor and gaming and cannabis.
Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, sort of similar kind of questions, uh, because I, there's a few other places that I thought were, uh, agricultural, but like, uh, Three Fifty Farms and Cowboy Town, or is that, is this be- this one is because of the liquor sales? Is that the difference?
Through the reef to Counselor Swiger, no, that is not the difference. This is just, um, it's not exclusively an advanced venue. It is an events venue and the saloon. So the eating and drinking facility puts it in a category that is not a use in agricultural.
So is Three Fifty Farms though agricultural, or no?
Three Fifty Farms has an intensive recreation use, which was a discretionary use, which came to counsel. Um, the MD does not regulate, uh, liquor. We provide a letter saying that we do not regulate liquor, but if the applicant wanted to serve it, we state they have this permit in place, and if ALGC approves it, then they can serve liquor.
So, no, I'm still not sure, though. So you're saying this isn't discretionary use, but Three Fifty Farms was discretionary use?
That is correct.
So what was the difference, though? Is it, they're both ag, and what am I missing? Was Three Fifty Farms not ag?
It is an intensive recreation use. So she's got camping and, um, she does serve food there.
Okay, but how's that different than this application? I'm just trying to understand the differences between the applications. And what am I missing?
Three, three, Mr. Reeve, and counsel, Three Fifty Farms is re-designated to in- intensive recreation. This has remained as an ag parcel. That is, that is the primary difference but between.
Is, but intensive recreation, that's not a rezoning, though, is it?
Yes, that's a, that's a land use.
Well, that's a rezoning, so.
You just, you just did an intensive recreation here just a, a couple minutes ago to allow certain.
So why isn't that in the recommendations then to switch to intensive recreation?
Yeah, that's kind of my question, I guess, why not?
Sorry, through the reef to counsel. So we have land use di- districts on the land. This is, uh, giving landowners permitted uses and discretionary uses. When they apply for use, it's actually putting like a layer of use on the land. So Three Fifty Farms, they got an intensive recreation use. It didn't change the zoning, but it allowed her to do the activities that she's doing, right? So like Journey North, they have a winery use put on the land. It's not redistricting, it's not rezoning. It's just a added, you can do this on your land, added permissions.
So then this place would remain as agricultural?
That is correct.
I think we had Counselor Sutrick then, Counselor Crick.
Yeah, but, uh, they wanna also hopefully host event venues like weddings, probably, and all that stuff, maybe anniversaries and that, so, I don't know. Uh, I, I'm for this, like, I, if they're willing to invest and try to keep the economy going and be better themselves, like, I don't, I don't want to hold them back.
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, so if we approve it, then we're just allowing them to do another use on this piece of property as well? And I don't see a problem with it either myself, so I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Mr. Reeve? Yes?
Just a question for counsel then, because I believe that we are, uh, there, there are question marks. I can, I can feel them forming in the administrat- uh, administration sitting beside me. That what is the purpose of the land use bylaw if every time somebody applies for something that's currently not in the land use bylaw, which by the way, counsel approved, uh, what, um, I, I don't understand then the purpose of creating the regulation in the first place. If every time somebody applies for something, it's going to be approved because, so, so I'm, I'm gonna need some clarity as we start rebuilding the land use bylaw here later this year as to what is, uh, it, it was neither permitted, this particular application is neither permitted nor discretionary use. That was a counsel decision when counsel approved the land use bylaw. So what other things, because I, I can tell you that I have staff sitting behind me right now who are asking themselves the same questions. We, we're not sure what we should be telling residents when they call. I guess just to come straight to counsel.
Yeah, thank you. Al, go ahead. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, again, you know, we made Cowboy Farms, uh, Three Fifty Farms, Journey North, apply through the proper process, and I think that's where we should be heading. Uh, I mean, if, if we were just gonna pass everything, then we just, yeah, I mean, there's a process, and I think the process is, is great, and I think we just carry on with that.
Yeah, Counselor Crick?
Yes, what is that process that you're recommending then?
Administration?
I have our planner here to explain if, if this permit was refused, the applicant could go through the rezoning process to rezone to one of the zones where it is a permitted use, so rural, commercial. Um, so I'll leave it to him to explain that.
Good morning. So.
Good morning.
Uh, if you guys were to refuse the application, uh, the applicant is more than welcome to come in to apply for rezoning. Uh, so the, in the, in that case, they just come in, fill out an application, provide, uh, um, a little map that shows the area that they are looking to rezone. They do not have to rezone the entirety of their quarter section or property, whatever it may be. They are allowed to have multiple zonings within a parcel. So as an example, if you had a full quarter section and you just wanted to rezone, say, five or ten acres of that, uh, parcel, you are allowed to do that. I believe this, uh, parcel in particular is about just under ten acres, though, so more than likely looking to rezone the entirety of that property. Uh, the process, uh, involves, uh, re- review internally by administration. We would then be looking to refer the, uh, application to the adjacent landowners so that they have an opportunity to speak to it. Uh, it would then come in, um, for first reading. We'd advertise for a public hearing, go through the public hearing process, and then go through second and third reading. It's the same process as adoption of, or the amendment of the land use bylaw. And so from there, uh, if it was to be approved without any issues, uh, then they would have to come back in again at that point, um, to apply for the use that they are looking for. So as an example, under intensive recreation or rural, uh, commercial, uh, eating slash, or sorry, eat slash drink facility, the use, um, is permitted in both of those districts. So once they have rezoned their property to either of those districts, whatever they feel is, uh, most comfortable, or I guess whatever counsel is willing to approve, um, then they would come in, apply for the development permit again, and we'd move forward from there, essentially.
Go ahead, Counselor Crick.
What, what is the cost involved for?
I believe it is a thousand dollars, uh, to apply for, uh, LUB amendment.
Okay, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I can just speak here, what I'm hearing is they, there is a process to apply for rezoning.
Yep.
Uh, with a bit of a cost involved. Um, some of these businesses might, sounds like a small business. I don't think there's gonna be a, a lot of money there. And also, we're talking about trying to get businesses into the MD of Bonneville, and if we want to put people through a public hearing process and, and a lot more red tape is kind of what I'm hearing, then it just, I don't understand why when we can just approve something, and the, what landowner letters were already sent out. I don't think there was any concerns. So I don't, I don't see why we would go through that, that lengthy process when we can just approve it. It's like our CAO has something to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of counsel. It's always a balancing act between the creation of economic activity, um, and, uh, and the, uh, uh, and the protection of the, of the rights of the landowners, not just that applying, but also in and around the area. Uh, the redesignation process has a public hearing because although we didn't receive necessarily any letters of, uh, of people being negative towards it, uh, uh, trust me that the day after, um, there's five hundred people show up for a wedding on a Saturday, and, and, uh, they have wedding activities into the wee hours of the morning, you will receive phone calls from the residents saying, "We didn't know this was going to happen." And the, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow all of those, uh, that information to come forward, to allow counsel to ask questions as to what this is actually going to look like. So all you have today in front of you is this is going to be a, a saloon and, and an event venue. Well, what does that mean? I haven't heard anybody ask the question, what does that, does that mean? How many people are gonna be there? What's it gonna do to traffic? Um, what's a, you know, how, how are, how is parking gonna be handled? All of those things that will be dealt with through a public hearing. So counsel gets all the information to make a, an informed decision as to whether or not that's a benefit to, um, A to the landowner applying, a benefit to the area residents, and C, a benefit to the municipality. And that's the, uh, that's the, uh, the process of the public hearing. An approval today, uh, counsel can certainly go ahead and do that, but the approval today, um, uh, we don't know what that looks like because no one's asked the questions. Is it's going to be a thousand people on a weekend? Is it gonna be, is this gonna be twenty, you know, forty cars driving to there to go to the restaurant and, and to the, uh, to the lounge every evening? Uh, uh, we don't know that because those questions haven't been asked, nor has that information been provided. So, uh, that's the benefit of the public hearing and going through the actual redesignation process. It may sound like red tape, but it allows people, uh, in, living in, in a, in a very prescribed area and throughout the municipality to, uh, to weigh in as to whether or not that's something they would like to see in their community. And that's the benefit of the public hearing process and the redesignation process.
Yes, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I agree a little bit with you, but I'm, you know, I'm a hundred percent in support of this business. I think it, it'll be fine there. But, you know, I can't sit here and say, you know, um, you know, Three Fifty Farms and Cowboy Town and all these places, you have to do it this way, but these guys can do it this way, right? I mean, um, I know, you know, they, I just, I think we just, this one here, it's easy to follow the process. We just approved. We just approved the one for this campsite. I mean, they, I mean, all these people are doing it the right way and, you know, I have no issue pushing this one through, but it, I think it's just we're doing it the wrong way here this way for sure, so.
Yes, go ahead.
I 100% agree and I, I, you know, I look at, you know, I hate to say it, but you look at the location, Glendon's struggling anyway with stuff in, is that, I think by, if, if this person goes through the right process, they'll have time to rethink, is this really what we want to do? And follow all the regulations and, and, you know, do, do we want stuff just popped up everywhere in the M D? And I kind of look at all our sub, industrial, or sorry, residential subdivisions and some of these environment, or sorry, industrial subdivisions that just pop up because council said, go ahead. But, so if we're not following our municipal development plan and laying out stuff where we think it should go, you know, I, this, I, I, I agree with you, Counselor Scarsen. I think they should follow the process and then they'll have a time, chance to rethink, and so will council and all the residents.
Yes, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to this at all, just to throw that out there. I'm in favor, but there is a process in this way. If everything is open and everybody knows about it, and if there is dust control issues, you know, who's going to pay for that? And I think it's one of those things where we can just lay it all on table for everybody. But yeah, I'm not opposed to it, but there is a process to be followed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm being made more aware of the process and I'm okay with going through the process. It sounds like the other, other places with recreation, like 350 Farms, Cowboy Town, they had to go through that process too, so.
So would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion.
And then make a different one?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay, we're going to withdraw it? Yes, go ahead.
Reeve Kalinsky? The applicant would like to speak to the application.
Sure.
And we need a motion for that.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to let the applicant? Yes, Counselor Crick makes this motion. Let's see, we'll let him have time to write this up. Okay, moved by Counselor Crick that council approves Wanda Marsh to address council in favor of the agenda item 7.5, development application number 2023D103, saloon events venue. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie, thank you. Go ahead, Wanda.
Hi, so I appreciate all your feedbacks. We have looked at planning this for quite a few years. So currently, right now, we have a fabrication industrial shop. So we are not on gravel roads, we are on, and I shouldn't say it's a high grade pavement, but it is a pavement road. We constantly have traffic in, in and out as of now, so our shop burned down three years ago. We had looked at turning it into a saloon event center beforehand. And this, when it burnt down, it give us, we rebuilt our shop brand new. So this is what gave us the opportunity to now, is to go ahead with this idea. So it's not something that's new to us, it's not something we haven't looked into before. It isn't something that we've had planners come in and show us how to turn an industrial shop, I'm a bit shaky, industrial shop into a westernized saloon. I grew up, my grandfather had a western saloon, that's how I grew up for my summer down in B C. So it is something we have a lot of knowledge about. We're not looking at a 400-person venue. This is not like a big open bar for the evenings. This is somewhere people can come sit down, have a steak night, do some country dancing. We would love to have a dance floor, bring in some dance classes, because we don't have anything like that right now. And anytime we do have a dance event anywhere around, right, you get a lot of people because you, we don't have those opportunities. We, we're looking to bring a bunch of people to our community so that we can bring money back to our community. We've had a business in Glendon now for 17 years. And we're just looking at changing the way our business is now to something more that can bring more people in. My kids are older now and they travel, like my kids travel to Edmonton, they travel to Red Deer for saloon type bars. Because they're a lot, they're just a better place to go sit down, have a drink, right? You're not looking at having a big DJ and a big rave, you're not looking at that. You're looking at sitting down at a country table, having a drink, having a steak, going home. We're looking at having live bands, we can bring people from the community, bring people in, people can sit there. We're looking at opening our overhead doors and allowing our band to be able to go outside with a stage that holds out the overhead doors. You can have a patty go outside, you can have, like, we're looking at, um, like picnic tables or covered wagon tables. My family has grown up on horse ranches, we have the access where my brother and my dad do wagon rides. So when we say weddings, we'd love to be able to bring people in and offer those wagon rides for their weddings, offer that kind of event, have the hitching rails. We are off the Iron Horse Trail. You know, we, we can bring in our quaters, we can bring in our sledders, so they can sit down, they can have a hot meal halfway through their sledding trip. So it's not something that's new to us, it's not an idea that's new to us, it's an idea we've put a lot of thought in for a lot of years. It's something I was raised in, I'm not saying I was raised in a bar, but it is something I was raised around. My grandfather owned a great big western saloon and offered horse rides up the mountains. I grew up horse riding in the mountains, going back and having a hot steak and a baked potato in the end of the night. So I just wanted to give you guys a little background. It isn't new to us, it isn't a brand new business either. It is something that we've had a lot of traffic. This does eliminate, like, right now, we have a lot of big traffic, right? We have a lot of big truck haulers, we have a lot of, right, we move a lot of freight, we move a lot of, we, we weld, right? So we're constantly shipping stuff to S E N R L, to Sanovis, to Osum, we've shipped stuff to Ontario. We're not looking at bringing big trucks in anymore. We're just like, I mean, besides your freight haulers of like your alcohol or, you know, just your delivery people. But we're not looking at overloading our roads. We do know all of our neighbors, we come from a small community. Before I presented this, before I come here, I did go to all the neighbors and I did ask them. Because if anyone had any issues with any of it, I wouldn't have even come to the M D. Because I don't want to cause troubles with my community, it's where I live, it's where I've been raised. So just some background or just in case you guys had questions for me, that's kind of where we come from.
Yes, Counselors Scarsen.
Yeah, I'll tell you that I don't need to be sold on the idea, I think it's a wonderful idea and I think that you guys will do very well at it. I just feel that there's a process that needs, needs to be followed. And, you know, I can't in the right mind say, yes, you can do it like this and we're going to make the other people do it like this, right? That's the only way I can confirm. I think that you're going to do fine with it and it's going to happen, it just, you know, the road to get there is just maybe not this road, right?
No, and we understand that, like, we're, even on our agricultural, for us to open our industrial shop, right? We had to go through the same process. It just didn't, when we wanted to rezon the land, that wasn't the process we had to go through. It's not that we wouldn't have tried or we wouldn't have done that if that's what we needed to do. It's just industrial shop, that landed on a use we could use, right? So we still pay, like I know a question was taxes, we still pay taxes on an industrial shop. We don't pay taxes on an agricultural land. Our power, everything like that is all agricultural, are all industrial rated, right? So we are open to do what we have to do to get it, to go over looking for.
I also think that, you know, hearing kind of the description a little bit more from you, you're probably in your best interest to get it zoned as industri- or as recreational. And then you won't, you know, you won't run into problems down the road, right? Because everything was done the right way and approved the right way, so.
Yeah, and that's why I wasn't sure, because I know Christie had explained, even though it's agricultural, we still put a use on it. So it's still maybe not zone agricultural, but it's that land use agreement, right? So we're good to go whatever way we need to go, whatever you guys recommend. But we did understand, you know, that it's still, yes, it's agricultural land, but it's still zoned, zoned isn't the right word, but it's still under a land use agreement, right? So that's just kind of where we are. So our shop finally got rebuilt back in April and this is just where we're looking to take it.
Yeah, I just, sorry, I would just suggest that, you know, we accept this as information, I guess, whatever, and have, want to go back to planning and work on the process of doing it through the right channels, right? So.
Yeah, I just, how long would it take to rezon, like how big of a process we're talking? I should know that, but I.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, a motion from, if council wanted to, a motion that would be helpful is to direct administration to expedite a redesignation process for the applicant. We can, we can move this forward fairly quickly. We're, we're not talking a year, we're talking, you know, a couple of months. There are some legal timelines that we have to follow in terms of notifications and public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. But in reality, uh, once the basic paperwork is in and we have a description and, you know, some mapping of exactly what area of the property would be re-designated, this can all happen fairly quickly.
Yeah, okay, because I, I really don't think anyone's here is opposed to this, it's just the way it's going about, so.
I think you can be pretty confident that it is going to go forward, we've done it several times in the past, right? So.
And yeah, thank you for speaking, it helps us a lot. Appreciate it, yeah.
So I'll go ahead and make that motion to expedite a.
Yeah, the council directs administration to expedite a redesignation process for the applicant.
That's what I meant.
I think that's exactly what he said. Yes, go ahead.
Reeve Kalinsky, we still need a decision for this application.
Yes, we got to do that first. Would like to make a motion? It's on the, on the screen.
Well, it could be added to my motion that we deny this request and have the administration expedite the process of getting it zoned properly.
You want that in two?
Two separate ones?
Yeah, let's just do two separate ones.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, I'm not sure that we need, I, I think the motion could be as an option just to direct administration to begin the redesignation process. The, the issue with the plain refusal is we end up with this six-month question that, that I'm not sure we want to get into. So I, personally, for me, as a director of administration, is, is that, is to amend, is to amend the, the options to.
Give one more.
Asking the applicant to redesignate and this, this is put on.
Yeah, because we just said that we're going to try to do as quickly as possible. And if we do, if we approve that, if we don't approve it, we're, we're putting a big timeline.
How would you suggest, Ms. Poyea?
Option four.
We could actually request an extension with the landowner and not make a decision on this right now. Just extend the timeline that we have on this application, so we wouldn't have to make a decision right now. It would still be valid and we can approve it once the land is redistricted.
We don't have to do anything.
So just table for.
For information?
Table to a future council meeting.
Okay, would someone like to table this to a future?
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for tabling this to a future council meeting. I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you. Onto 7.6.
This is development permit application 2023-D-104 for Jeremy Hayter, Pipe Sliders Limited. The applicant is applying for rural industrial use for a casing jack company. The property is located 900 feet east of Highway 892 and Township Road 632 intersection. Adjacent properties are residential parcels, quarter section remnants. Administration was made aware of the business operating on the lands without permits in place. Contact was made with the owners of the business resulting in this application to bring the land into compliance. The applicant has applied for a development permit for a minor rural industrial use for their casing jack company. Typically, they perform one to two jobs a week off-site. The trucks, trailers, and equipment are stored and maintained on-site. The mobile home is used as a residence and a home office. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 24th, 2023, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application 2023-D-104 is approved the request for a minor rural industrial use for a casing jack company as discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 58, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section 52 of the land use bylaw number 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic. Shall comply with consolidated public safety bylaw number 1812 regarding noise and nuisance. The applicant shall ensure that emergency vehicle access is not obstructed at any time. No offensive odor, noise, vibration, electrical interference, smoke, dust, heat, or glare shall be produced by the use.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swager.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve. Thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves development permit application number 2023D104 for rural industrial use for the casing jack company within Southwest 13634 west, west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 58 of the general regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw for Jeremy Hayter as per the recommendations presented. Any discussion on this motion?
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadeev.
Yeah, so how can we make people more aware of the permit process? You know, I just, it just seems like, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with this, that it's a perfect location and everything else, but how can we make residents more aware of the permit process needed for a development?
Through the reef to Deputy Reeve Fadeev. Well, when the assessors go out, they do make them aware, especially after the fact here in this case. We could, we do put out information in the newsletters and in the loop and just talking to people and telling them to tell their friends.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And, and through the reef to council, I would suggest that we could probably craft a bit of a communication strategy where we hit social media and on a, on a recurring cycle through the website, our Rural Review, and our other social media pages, and just, and just kind of run that, you know, every three or four months, just to remind everybody of, of permit processes. I think that would be, I don't know that we do a good enough job of that right now.
Yeah, there's somewhat of a, kind of a stress hormone for the applicant now, going, oh, no, I'm not compliant. Now what happens to my business if I, you know, if this gets rejected? And I mean, I just, it just would make it a lot easier for the whole process and for, you know, for them as well to make sure that they're, they're okay with all this, so, well, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto 7.7.
This is development permit application 2023-D-117 for Travis and Amanda Knutslin. The applicant is applying for a greenhouse with store and outdoor storage. The property is located half a mile north of Highway 55 and 892 roundabout. Adjacent properties are residential parcels, a quarter section, and a remnant. The applicant is applying to operate a greenhouse with store and outdoor storage. They will start with a 40 by 30 store with a 30 by 40 greenhouse with plans to expand to a 100 by 40 greenhouse with 3 30 by 100-foot wings. They will operate year-round, seven days a week, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. with two employees. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out June 6th, 2023, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application 2023-D-117 is approved the request for a greenhouse as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the general regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. Setbacks shall be a front yard 63.7 meters from the center line of the secondary highway, rear and side yard 6 meters. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on-site in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per. Building waste materials shall be contained on-site in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per Section two of the Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw number eighteen twelve. Approval from Alberta Transportation is required. As per Section fifty-two of the Land Use Bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev.
Yeah, I'd like to make the approval for this, so council approves development permits, option number one.
Thank you, Deputy Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number two zero two-three D one one seven for a greenhouse within northeast twenty-three sixty-three four west of the fourth M as discretionary use pursuant to Part Six, Section fifty-eight of the General Regulations and Part Seven, Section sixty-nine point two of the Land Use Bylaw for Travis and Amanda K. as per the recommendation presented.
Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you, good job.
Thank you.
All right, on to subdivision applications, eight, eight point one.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Administration has received and is presenting a request for time extension for subdivision application two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero four for council consideration wherein the applicant is requesting a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero four within agricultural quarter section northeast six sixty-one eight west of the fourth meridian as attached as Appendix A. Administration recommended action is that council approves request for a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero four for Priscilla Kukowski.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Subchik, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the request for a one-year extension on conditionally approved subdivision file number two zero two-two S zero zero four for Priscilla Kukowski. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you, that's Carrie, on to eight point two.
Thank you. Administration has received and is presenting a request for time extension for subdivision application two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero five for council consideration wherein the applicant is requesting a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero five within agricultural quarter section northwest thirty-one fifty-nine four west of the fourth meridian. Administration recommends that council approves the request for a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two-two dash S dash zero zero five for Diane Beshon.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve this.
Thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the request for a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file number two zero two-two S zero zero five for Deanna Beshon. Any discussion on this?
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day. Onto nine point two, point one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Reeve and council, administration is proposing changes to policy five A point zero one six, developed road allowance vegetation control policy to remove the brushing portion of the vegetation control policy. In the two thousand twenty-three approved budget, brushing of roadside right-ofways was moved from Agricultural Services to Transportation and Utilities Department. The following changes have been made to policy number five A dot zero one six. The definitions, number two, brush, has changed from fifteen centimeters to five centimeters in diameter and added two meters to the height. Definition number four, brushing, was removed. Policy part one in general, all references to the tree removal in the roadside ditches, has been removed. Part two, in the spring, public notify, notification now refers to Bylaw eighteen thirty, M.D., public notifications. And part five, roadside back sloping, the roadside back sloping program has been moved back into its original entity and is now referred to as five roadside back sloping and removal from the number one in general. Administration is recommending that council adopts the amended, amending policy number five A dot zero one six, developed road allowance vegetation control policy formerly known as the developed road allowance brush and vegetation control policy as presented.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Reeve, just a-
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. I think when I read this, maybe I misunderstood something, but we still have a brushing policy though, right, but it's done by a different department. And so my, my concern though was that we went from a twenty-year plan to a four-year plan, and I hope that doesn't, I hope that's not the intent of the brushing policy to change to a four-year plan. Just your vegetation policy, is it, or?
Yeah, through the Reeve, yes, that's correct. Vegetation we can control in four years, which is usually the length of the, of the chemistry control, and the brushing policy will be brought forward through Transportation and Utilities later in this session.
Okay, because I, I was concerned that if the brushing policy changed to a twenty-year, or to a four-year plan, that doesn't work, because you gotta give people lots of time to know that your trees are gonna be all brushed, right?
Right.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Why, why did we change the centimeter, brush means trees and shrubs, five centimeters diameter? Why did we, what was the purpose for changing those?
For the removal method, we will do it either by chemistry or, or by the mowers, and we can't go any bigger than the, the two centimeters.
Any other comments, or someone like to make a motion? Yes?
Like to make the motion to move this forward.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number five A point zero one six development road allowance vegetation control policy formerly known as development road allowance bush and vegetation control policy as presented.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Onto nine point three, point one.
Good morning.
Morning.
By law number eighteen forty-two, which is a roadway licensing for second and third reading. Administration is seeking approval for roadway license eighteen forty-two, authorizing the M.D. of Bonneville to enter an agreement to license a hundred-and-thirty-meter-long portion of road allowance south of the southeast of twenty-seven sixty-three of nine in accordance with policy three A point zero one eight, as shown on the map in Appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the portion of road allowance to be used to access for hauling sand and gravel materials related to surface material lease, SMC two-two zero 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 three. Council gave first reading at the April eleventh regular meeting of council. Public notification was completed as per our licensing of road waste policy as well as the M.D. public notification bylaw, with no concerns received. So administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw eighteen forty-two, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve Fideev.
I'd like to make the motion, go in the second reading, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making the motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen forty-two be given being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven roadway licensing to be given second reading. Any discussion? Gentlemen, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's Carrie, just looking for a third.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you, Councilor Subchik, for making a motion on behalf of council that the bylaw number eighteen forty-two be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's Carrie, we're on to nine point three point two.
So administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen forty-nine, authorizing the M.D. of Bonneville to enter an agreement to license road allowance north of the northwest of twenty fifty-nine of four in accordance with policy three A point zero one eight, as shown on the map on Appendix A. The applicants have applied to license a road allowance for grazing of horses. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there was no concerns. So administration is recommending that council give first reading.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen forty-nine being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven roadways and licensing be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's Carrie, thank you, on to nine point three point three.
So administration is proposing changes to policy two A point zero zero nine municipal lands policy following direction from council to propose direct sale at fair market value as an added option for disposing of municipal lands. The proposed amendments to current policy two A point zero zero nine is attached as Appendix A. So notable changes and additions are the update of the section from General Governments and Administration Services to now be under planning in Community Services. Update the name of the policy to improve clarity on the policy's purpose to disposal of municipal lands policy. Update the public notification requirements to correspond with the M.D. public notification bylaw. Clarify aspects of the condition of sale. Update the aspects of the policy regarding tax forfeiture lands. Replace the procedure for tax forfeiture lands to read as subject to the requirements of provincial and municipal legislation. Remove portions of the policy regarding leasing of municipal lands due to the creation of a proposed new separate policy and add direct sale of municipal lands at fair market value as a second land disposition option. So these proposed amendments were presented to Committee of the Whole on May sixteenth. The Committee of the Whole did recommend to council adopting the amended policy as presented. So our recommendation is that council adopts the amended policy policy numbers C dash three A point zero one nine, disposal of municipal lands policy formerly known as municipal lands policy as presented.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Swiger?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council adopts amending policy number C dash C A point zero one nine disposal of municipal lands policy formerly known as policy number two A point zero zero nine municipal lands policy as presented. Any discussion on this? Yes, Councilor Crick?
Yeah, just to administration, is there something in that, there's references to the Municipal Governance Act, there's sections which I'm not hundred percent familiar with. But is there, like, is, it's direct sale, I guess I'm just looking for clarity. If somebody wants to buy a piece of property and somebody else, like, if two people want to buy the same piece of property, do they have, how does that work out then, I guess?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members, council. So in the example that a individual knows that we have a piece of property and they approach us, we can sell directly to a single individual, single buyer if we sell the land at fair market value, where market value is what, it's how it's worded in the Municipal Government Act. If there are more than, if there are more than one or two people, or more than one person who would like the land, I would suggest that we would probably at that point set a public auction and probably make the reserve bid either through policy or any number the council would like. If we do have multiple people interested in a piece of property, I don't think you could just sell to one person based on market value. I think at that point you've got to, you've got to advertise and allow multiple people to bid on the property. But in many cases, it's just somebody who knows we have something and make an offer that nobody else really wants. Could be a bareland parcel out in the country and, you know, pieces of property we've owned for a long time. But it would be my recommendation that if more than one interested buyer had indicated an interest, that there's probably wouldn't be a good idea just to sell directly to the first person who, who showed up.
I, I guess my concern is that somebody may come along, want to buy a piece of property, and other people had no idea it was even for sale, or that was an option. And they find out after it's being sold. So is there, I, I guess I think it'd be prudent to have something if somebody wants to buy it, there's like two weeks' notice for anybody else if they wanna, if nobody else says they want it, then it's, we sell it direct sale, otherwise it goes to public auction if there's one more person interested at that point.
You certainly, that could certainly be added to the policy if council wanted to do that, to add an advertising portion to that. It's not there today. Most of the land, for example, that we currently have in surplus is already, has come to council through public council meetings, although it's not been advertised specifically for sale. It has come as surplus land to the M.D., and I do know that we are gonna be speaking in closed session later today about two pieces of property that people found out through the public, or through the, through the council meetings, that those were surplus properties. So I guess it depends on, on the definition of advertising. Do we advertise specifically that we are selling a piece of property? Or when it comes to a public meeting, that there's a surplus properties that we would be interested in, in selling, does that meet the definition of advertising?
Well, I would think it should be like posted in, in the newspaper or something for two weeks. Like, if somebody wants to build, build something, if I want to build a garage, my understanding is that that goes in the newspaper for two weeks so that anybody can have concerns. This just seems like if some, if there's a piece of surplus property that somebody wants to purchase, well, it can get notified for two weeks. It's pretty minimal time to wait. If nobody else comes forward, they want to purchase it, we sell it at fair market value, if somebody else comes forward and wants it as well, then it's public auction at that point.
So we sent you, if I understand you correctly, through the Reeve, to Councilor Crick, as we should be advertising every property that we, that we would like to sell? And, and then, I, I guess at that point, everything would then be sold through public auction? Unless there's only one person, and then their bid would, their bid would be what? Because currently through public auction, we set the reserve at eighty percent of market value, would be the reserve bid. That's typically how we deal with tax forfeiture properties that are going up for sale. So if we advertise the property and then more than, more than one or two people come forward, we could actually end up taking less for the property because we are forced in a, in a sole sale, we are forced to take market value. But in an auction, we only have to, we, we only would take whatever the best bid was over the reserve, which could be less than market value. Because the auction does not require us to sell at market value. You could set the reserve at market value. That's, that's not currently policy. I believe policy right now is eighty percent of market value. And those, it, it all goes to philosophy, and it certainly would be, if that's an addition council would like to make to that, we could certainly make that amendment and bring that policy back, that all lands have to be advertised for a minimum of fourteen days prior to, prior to a formal sale. That would certainly be up to council.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I, I agree with Councilor Crick that it maybe doesn't look great if we, if somebody says, hey, you got this piece, I'm interested in it, no one else knows about it, then we sell it directly. It's, I, I think it's kind of just for transparency, it would be good to have, to list it then. Yeah, I kind of, I guess I was under the impression that when we were gonna do this, we were just gonna, you know, go through realty, realty companies or whatever and just list stuff and sell it, but direct sale, yeah, well, I, I'm not sure if I'm happy with that either.
Okay, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
I mean, that, I mean, I don't think transparency has anything to do with it. The, the whole idea is this, this came through the proper process before, and it's sitting on our, in our hands for obvious reasons, because it went to public auction. There was a process of doing that, and, and all that, I mean, it's just, yeah, I don't think it's, I think it's a good idea, but I don't think it's about transparent. I mean, people know about it, they can find out. I had a friend of mine just pick up a piece of land in, in, like in New Brunswick, that he went on their site, and he found out the listings of it. He put a bid on it and off he went, so.
You said listing, so he found a listing of it, so we're not doing that, though. If somebody just approached us, we would sell it directly to them without listing anything?
If they knew about it, how would they know about it?
Well, that's the point. I mean, there's probably, that's the issue, though. There's, like, some guy that lives out in the bush somewhere on- on a quarter, and he knows there's a quarter beside him that, I don't know, no one else has wanted it, he just offers his money and we sell it. But maybe the other guy didn't even realize that it was for sale, because we're not listing them.
And he's not a neighbor, yeah.
Yeah, Councilor Crick?
Sorry. Yeah, it's not just tax forfeiture lands, it could be any land that the- the M.D. owns, so it's a hundred percent could be something that the M.D. even purchased, and then they decide they don't have the use for it. Could be, you know, I'm just thinking scenarios outside the box. It could be somebody wanted to buy a piece of land, and then ten years, the M.D. says no, because they had a purpose for it, ten years later, the M.D. doesn't have a purpose, somebody else comes in, wants to buy the same piece of land, according to this policy, the M.D. could just sell it to that guy, then, and somebody else that already, like, ten years earlier, asked to buy the same piece, right? So I- so I kind of like the, having a couple weeks' notice in there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so, Mr. Reeve and council, so the, uh, it certainly is a philosophy, um, and a- and a- and a theory as to how the M.D. should sell land. I would point out, however, that even a few weeks ago, we spoke about, uh, land that we currently lease, that if we were ever to sell that land, would we, uh, would we sell it, I- I, and I believe Councilor Crivie had spoke directly to the issue, um, to a long-term leaseholder, do they get right of first refusal and to buy the land? If they get right of first refusal, then that would- that would negate the ability to advertise that piece of property. What about a parcel of land that has a sliver that's somehow been fragmented, that we just want to add to the adjacent landowner's land, just to say, here, get- get rid of this, you know, eighth of an acre piece that's just sitting there that has, that can't be used for anything else, would that have to be advertised as well? And then, if it was advertised, do you run the risk of somebody buying that little eighth of an acre just because? And we have fragmented parcels. I would also suggest that the, we did provide a fairly in-depth, um, list of- of surplus properties to council in February or March, of, and that's, I know of the one case in particular that we'll be speaking about in closed session, that's how he became aware of that, is it was through, uh, was through that particular presentation. There are multiple ways to do this, and if council wants to go down that road to advertise all properties, we probably have to go back and come back with a- with a fresh, uh, policy, because that would introduce other issues that we would have to work our way around through a policy perspective. Again, how would you handle leased land that we're currently leasing to a, uh, to a farmer who's using it for ag purposes, and then we decide we want to sell it, would we advertise it, and then they possibly lose a piece of property that's, uh, embedded into their farming operation? And I wouldn't, I- I wouldn't want to do that, and I don't think council would really want to do that either, but that's, that- that would be the issue on- on advertising lands that are for sale. If we know of somebody who would be a- a, uh, a good steward of that piece of property, and they're prepared to pay market value, um, that- that also bears some fruit as well.
I- I just know some, you know, some guys that have two quarters in a row that they rented from- from the M.D. forever, and they're, you know, they're writing in their land base, and then anybody could come, so it put a pretty tough, pretty tough on them.
We- we can put, easily put that into the policy, though, that if a farmer's renting the land, or somebody's renting quarters that they have, the first right of refusal to purchase it, too, that's not a problem. But this policy doesn't specifically outline that. It's just any p- any piece of land anywhere in the M.D. that we want to sell, that it can just be sold to the first person that comes along, and nobody else even has an idea that it was for sale, or they have a chance at it, so. Yeah, it's, I just, I, you know, we went through all this with, uh, with committee on the whole, and, uh, that's where we bash around ideas, and this is coming up on this, but, uh, it is whatever, but I mean, it's, I would- I would hate to just be, just on farmers alone, it's got to be, you know, everywhere, so say we're going to sell off just like, let's say, a little sliver to, uh, say, as a cabin community, and, uh, the one neighbor takes care of that property already, how- how is that fair to somebody, you know, to- to him, excuse me, so, uh, but, I don't know where to put this.
Yeah.
Yes, Reeve, it's a tough one, because, uh, C.A.O. mentioned the leasing agreement one that's coming up, and even that's a bit of a tough one, because in that leasing agreement deal, there's, you can, the farmer has the right to lease it for up to twelve years, but then what happens after twelve years? Then we can say, okay, we'll direct sell it to him for market value if he doesn't want it. I guess if he doesn't want it for market value, we sell it to somebody else, I don't know. Maybe there's ways around it all, I suppose. It's not straightforward.
And, Mr. Reeve, members of council, if you're interested in making those changes, I would suggest that we, that, um, recommend to council to table this, and then if that's, if that's the direction council like to go, because it would be a fairly significant rewrite of the policy, I- I, and that's fine, that's, uh, it's council's policy, but we would need, we'd need some time to come back and- and implement, and kind of work through what those challenges would be in terms of, um, in terms of, uh, the advertising and how we would do that, managing, you know, the different types of properties, the leased properties, the fragmented parcels, the pieces that just come up, and then, of course, our tax forfeiture properties as well.
Yeah, I feel that there's a lot of, uh, you know, uncertainty here, so I think we should table this, myself, I-
And I would add that most of the properties that are going to be sold directly have, at one point, been advertised, because we typically own property through taxes, and at one point, most of the properties, for example, the lots that we, uh, that we currently own in theory, uh, they were- they were taxed, at one point, they were tax forfeitures. So they were advertised once, and nobody wanted them, so now, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years later, would we have to re-advertise them, and that's, those are things, I think, from a policy perspective, that we need to work out.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll- I'll move to table this to a future meeting, or should I? Well, we can, we still make a motion to table, since there's already one there.
Yeah, she-
I think it needs a little more work, the policy, and- and I apologize for not picking this up during the committee of the whole meeting, but, uh, I noticed it on this- this time around, so.
Al, are we, uh, ready to break after this?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would suggest completing, uh, the, uh, the next, um, staff report.
Nine point three point four?
Yes, uh, that one is attached, and we're going to be recommending the same, because it- it's attached to the municipal lands disposal policy. We're just going to recommend that that particular policy, three A oh twenty, be tabled as well.
Okay, very good. And then we can break. Okay, thank. All right, we have a move by Councilor Crick, that council tables item number nine point three point three, policy number two A point zero zero nine, municipal lands policy amended to a future meeting of council or administration to gather additional information. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. We're going to go to nine point three point four.
So the leasing of municipal lands policy, um, was being created due to it being deleted out of the municipal lands policy, so I would recommend that this be tabled as well and brought back at the same time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right, Councilor Crick, we'll make that motion again. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilor Crick on behalf of council, that council tables not, item number nine point three point four, new policy number C three A point zero two zero licensing the municipal- municipal lands policy to gather more information. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, and we're going to break for lunch. Thank you.